Oh, really?
You're the booing?
Yeah.
Great.
So, let's see, how many do we have on the way to the meeting?
Yeah, Mike.
Three.
Three. Yeah.
Oh.
How is the quorum looking to you? All right, do you know when? Oh, yeah.
When they're supposed to be used.
I think I'm getting in trouble last time.
Yeah, don't start early.
We're recording.
All right, I'm gonna wait two, three more minutes and then we can get started, that will be fine. Go into next one. Yeah, she wasn't happy when I started that meeting.
I hope you know about the next one.
All right.
Did you have all the credentials, huh? You got them.
Tim O'Leary. We can learn any other one. One thing is still a class, we've got wars.
Just how much longer is that?
Uh, it's a month, huh? And uh, can I give you the...
Stoker.
Yes, sir.
She could appear best to work, you know, my... I'm the one who got...
Uh, sorry, my name? Eight four... No, you can skip to the... So, if you need anything, call me, thank you. I'm not there, but, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon to you, my name is Sina Najad, along with my fellow commissioners, we're gonna get started with the first part of our planning and zoning meeting. And for June twenty seventh, we have two cases that we're gonna go over, and then the rest is gonna be with the joint city council, and then we await their arrival. With that said, if you please silence your phones, so you do not disrupt the meeting, and if you are gonna speak, please abide by the time limit that's allotted to you. With that, if you would, please call the roll.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabbar.
Present.
Commissioner Javid.
Here.
Commissioner Linton.
Here.
Commissioner Maiken.
Here.
Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Pate is absent, and Commissioner Karishi.
Here.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon to all of you again, we do have the minutes of the meeting, however, there are some issues with the posting date, so we are gonna postpone the approval of the minutes until the next meeting. And with that, we get started with the first one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The first two items and PZ twenty two sixteen, sorry, PZ two twenty, I can't say it, twenty twenty-two dash two sixteen are intimately connected, and I can't read today. Jonathan Hart has requested two abandonments and a specific use permit for a proposed railroad spur to connect two existing segments. First, the abandonment of an approximate zero point zero seven three acre portion of the south undeveloped end of Winfield Drive, and all utility issues were resolved, so... See if I can advance for you. This shows, the red area is the actual portion of Winfield Drive they're asking to abandon. And this is their drawing describing, you know, their project that they intend to construct in this area and why they need the abandonment. And I've highlighted in yellow that about where that abandonment is located. And this is their survey drawing showing the portion, the green, is the area that they're wishing to abandon. And I think that's all the slides I had. All neighboring properties were notified.
So, there is no public hearing on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, is the applicant present? Good afternoon, sir. Would you come forward and state your name and address, and give us any additional information you might have, please?
Good afternoon.
Mr. Hart.
Yes, my name is...
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
My name is Jonathan Hart, and I actually filed the application on behalf of BNSF Railway. And actually, today with me also have Jeff Estes, he's the manager of engineering at BNSF Railway, so he's able to speak on the matter in detail.
Perfect, great. If you would, Mr. Hart, just state your address for the record, please, and then we'd be happy to hear.
Okay, it's nine eight four five McFarang Drive, Fort Worth, Texas.
Great.
You wanna hear my address?
It's all yours.
I'm Jeff Estes, I'm manager of engineering for BNSF Railway. You wanna hear my address?
Uh, no, sir, we're fine, yeah.
I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Uh, if, do you mind just letting us, tell us a little bit about your project, and why is it that you're asking for this?
Sure, can you put that picture back there?
Which one do you want?
Any of them, probably, yeah, right there, that's good. Oh, that'll work too.
That's...
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so, we are making a connection, if you see Crockett Street right there in the north, and where it crosses the railroad tracks, the railroad tracks, we're gonna widen out the railroad tracks, so we can make a curve. We're gonna go around the Burris property, and then tie back into the UP property, which is on the bottom of the, bottom right of that screen. Well, it'll come across Fanning Street, which is, uh, I think the Burris property is the only one that comes under there. The other... Yeah, so it comes back around, it's hard to show you on, with my hand. I think one of those engineers on, maybe on another... Oh, there you go.
Okay.
There you go, there you go. So, it crosses Fanning Street right up there.
Uh-huh.
And comes back through that vacant, those couple vacant lots, some of that property is UP property. And then we're gonna tie back into the UP's track. Down here in the bottom right. Years ago, I don't know how many years ago, there was a diamond that came across the UP up there across the street, and that was taken out. So, now we have no access to get back down around here, and that, that lead that goes back down to the southwest is the Goodyear lead, the one that goes out to Goodyear. We're gonna tie into that, and then tie back into UP.
Okay. Great. Any questions for the gentleman?
How long is the process gonna take for all of this?
Gosh, I hope not very long. We, we, um, we need the city's right away, the, the old right away that doesn't have improvements on it. And then we're also working with the UP right now, we're, we're about a couple days away from getting that property of the UP and the, and the agreement there. And then our contractor's gonna take about ninety days, and we'll probably take about another week or so after that to put track in it and open it back up, so...
Okay.
Four months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir.
I do have something else I needed to say, I'm sorry. Let's sit down. I failed to finish giving you the report, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Uh, we'll, we'll call him back if we need anything, go ahead.
I just needed to mention that the planning staff recommends approval of the request with the, with the following conditions. Number one is obtain approval of PZ twenty twenty-two dash two sixteen for a new rail spur. And if approved, the applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title commitment must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on city council's agenda.
Good. I, I tell you what, I think, let's hear him on the second one, and then we'll take a vote on, on both of them, if you don't mind. May we do that, councilor?
Sure.
Okay. That's nice.
Have a seat.
All right, Mr. Hart, we're gonna talk to you again, so go ahead, please.
The other abandonment is on your screen, where you see is an approximate zero point one two zero three acre portion of the north undeveloped end of Amarillo Street. The neighboring alleyway and block thirty to Cartwright Terrace, and then the joining portion of Forside Street. And in this case, all the utility issues were resolved as well. So, again, the conditions are obtain approval of PZ twenty twenty-two dash two sixteen for the new railroad spur, and then the appraisal, how to do that enough, and, um, payment before it gets placed on the city council's agenda.
Okay, got it.
Perfect, I think we understand the issues, any questions for the gentleman? Do you folks understand the conditions that, that they have on both cases?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. No other questions? Good, thank you very much. All right, folks, we have two cases, is PZ two zero two two dash one eight six, which is contingent on PZ two zero two two dash sixteen, and then PZ two two one eight six, one eight seven. Is there something wrong with these numbers? Because one of them is one eighty-six, one of them is one eighty-seven, but then it says approval of tw- twenty-two two sixteen.
Twenty-two two sixteen is...
Twenty-two two sixteen is a specific use permit that's related to these.
And it's gonna come back?
It's a separate item, yes, in today's agenda.
It's a public hearing item, Commissioner.
Okay, all right, good, great. All right, so we have two zero two two one six, two zero, no, I'm sorry, two zero two two one eighty-six, and two zero two two one eighty-seven. The, we've heard from the staff and also the applicant, and they do agree with the conditions one and two on each one of them. With that, I would ask for a motion for two zero two two one eight six first.
I make a motion, we approve, file PZ two twenty, two zero twenty-two dash one eighty-six with the two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, now we're gonna have a motion for PZ two zero two two one eight seven, please.
And I make a motion, we approve, file PZ two thousand twenty-two dash one eighty-seven with the two conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hicken.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Now...
There she is.
That's the end of it, isn't it?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, great, hello, mayor. We're gonna wait for a quorum, and we'll get started in a few seconds.
Well, we have a lot, we have to have four council members here in order to get started, but we have one upstairs for sure. So, and so does the other council member come down and really get started, thank you. Don't have any jokes.
Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I think we have a quorum with the city council, and the honorable mayor get us going.
We still don't have a quorum.
We have...
Yeah. He, he came very quietly.
Okay. Good afternoon, and thank you, and welcome to the joint meeting between the city council and the planning and zoning commission. Today may be the first opportunity that you will have to present your case. You, we will hear it on today, it will go to council within the next two weeks. So, any information that you would like to submit, or to be heard, or consideration of whatever you're presenting today, please make it known today, because you will not have another opportunity to present it to council when we vote in the next two weeks. Thank you. Do you want to have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mutan.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel, absent. Uh, council member Felchah, absent. Council member Turner, absent. Oh, council member, I mean, Mayor Protem Samuel, here. Okay, um, council member Neil.
Present.
Council member Getz.
Present.
And council member Durya.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor, we're gonna get started. Is it possible for me to rearrange the order here? There's no legal issues with that. For the sake of not having more excuses on the supply chain delivery, I get the railroad people first, so they can get on with their business, right? All right, so let's go ahead and get started with two zero two 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 one six, please.
Okay. File PZ twenty twenty-two dash two oh two one six, gotta get my paperwork straight, too. Okay. A request for a specific use permit to allow a new railroad spur in an RS residential single-family dwelling district. This item accompanies the abandonments. Mr. Hart for BNSF is requesting a specific use permit to allow a new railroad spur south of Fanning Street and east of Fourth Street. Some of that area, specifically the northeast and west sides of the six hundred block of Amarillo Street, and the south side of the twenty-six hundred block of Fanning Street are currently zoned residential single-family, requiring a specific use permit for a new railroad track. Existing tracks are located to the north and east adjacent to this location. Properties to the west and south of the new proposed railroad spur are single-family residential homes. To preserve the value of these properties, an eight-foot brick or masonry wall will be required along the edge of the new railroad tracks adjacent to the residential homes. In addition, a ten-foot wide landscape buffer with trees will be required between the fence and the residential homes. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, construct an eight-foot tall brick or masonry wall along the east edge of the new railroad tracks adjacent to the existing residential properties. And number two, a ten-foot wide landscape strip with trees along the west perimeter of the new railroad track outside the required wall to meet ordinance standards, city ordinance standards. And BNSF participate in the city's rail crossing enhancement program by permitting a mutual agreeable pedestrian crossing at one of BNSF's rail lines. Um, notices were mailed to property owners, there were thirty-four notices sent. We received eleven in favor. That was the properties that were sold to BNSF, and the previous owner responded in favor. And, uh, no notices received in opposition.
Great.
I do have a few more slides I can show you. Um, the red areas are the, the areas that are being touched, or, or are part of this project, and they are zoned residential single-family. Um, this is kind of an overlay showing how the rail will cross those properties. And another picture of the property, as you can see, that land is vacant, and those properties on that left-hand side along there are all single-family homes, as well as to the southwest, um, corner there. Here's a picture of the subject property, another picture of the subject property. And this is properties to the west, oops, let's go back. More properties to the west, this to the southwest. South and west. Uh, property to the south, I believe. And to the east. And that is all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ford? Hart, I'm sorry, Mr. Hart. Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon, thank you. And I, as mentioned before, I have Jeff Estes, he is the manager of engineering at BNSF Railway to help provide additional detail, and also to comment on a few items regarding the conditions to approve.
Go ahead, sir.
So, um, this is, this is kinda news to me about the eight-foot wall and the berm, landscape berm, I just found out about it not too long ago, but the property we had bought, and this is probably a good map here, the property we had bought comes up against that, well, it doesn't define where, where, where you guys want that happen. Comes up there against that property corner up there, and there's not a whole lot of room to do that kind of thing. We're not opposed to putting up a privacy fence or something like that. And we actually have excess material, we can make a landscape berm kind of thing. But, I'm not, I'm not sure there's enough room up on that corner there to do that. The other residences are further over to the west. Um, there's another railroad track, obviously, over here to the west of the Goyley Street, the Goodyear spur there.
Do we have a little marker thing that he can point and show us where everything he's talking about is? Please? Yeah, thank you.
So... Yeah, right up in here, it comes across Fanning Street, and that, that's, up in here is where those, that other vacation was, that we saw. But it comes across Fanning Street right in here, and we just barely, barely get that, come off of that corner there. And I don't, not sure there's gonna be enough room to put in the kind of wall and the ten-foot buffer of trees and stuff like that.
Where's the crossing going to be, the pedestrian crossing?
They're no, just unrelated to this project. I don't, I think they, I think you guys, city, applied for some pedestrian crossing, that great crossings or something like that. And I think that's over, actually, right outside the building here.
Well, actually, the city's looking for additional crossings over here across this railroad to access the Riverfront Park. Okay. Uh, for the proposed linear park that would, um, come from the Lake District all the way down and across the tracks down to the park. And, uh, they applied a few years ago, actually, for two crossings, and haven't heard back. And, uh, so, we were hoping to include this as part of the request. Okay.
So, it's kind of a swap, right?
That's what we're hoping, yes. Okay.
So, I think, I think you applied in twenty sixteen, I think there was some responses back from Tim Huya, the public projects manager, and I can get you the, the people they responded back to. I think there was three at-grade crossings where the pedestrians go right across the tracks. And our operations guys said, no, we don't want pedestrians going across the tracks, 'cause that will, that will make the newspaper, we don't want that. And so, I think right outside the building here, you have a, a grade separation where there's a tunnel, or a bridge, actually, goes underneath the tracks. And, uh, I think we responded back that you can put as many of those as you need, you want, at those, at those three locations. Sometimes they even put, instead of bridges, 'cause those are pretty expensive, you can put round pipes, ten-foot pipes, and then pour, pour concrete bottom to them. And then they can roll around through there with bikes and heads.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I'm, I'm not clear, the conditions say on here that approval with the following conditions. The eight-foot tall mason, brick or masonry wall, and, and, a ten-foot wide landscape strip with trees, and you're saying now that you may not have enough room for that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't come up with those recommendations. I think you're planning, planning something.
So does that mean you're gonna do those or not?
I would not like to do them, no. I could probably put a, a berm, a berm alongside of that, an elevated berm.
And, and as described on the, uh, conditions here, actually would be likely impossible just because of the amount of clearance between the property and another property in there as far as the ten feet is concerned. It may, it may not be possible.
It looks like you might have ten feet in there because tho- those lots are fifty feet, right? If my eyes.
Uh, you mean width-wise?
Right there?
Yeah.
Let's see, the, this property, I don't know if this is accurate or not, but we come up, we're at the next to that. That corner right there. And actually, there's a manhole right there that we're having to lift, raise, city manhole, sewer manhole to get, 'cause this, 'cause this Fanning Street, it's hard to see in this plan, it's overhead shot, but this Fanning Street is gonna, we're gonna bring that Fanning Street up about two and a half feet here and then back down. Because of the grade.
And on that, we're, it's, we're requesting a separate issue of permanent crossing with the city through the real property department on it.
Question though, but you can put the eight-foot wall up. You just don't see enough room to put the ten-foot barrier, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. Horizontally, I don't have enough room. And I, I just found out about this about a week ago about these conditions, but, and I'll have to go back and look and see what it looks like right here. Obviously, down in here, it's wide open. There's nothing, there's nothing that's permitting you there. But there also, there's also, this is all the heavily timbered in the backside of these houses. It's simple, if you go to one of those pictures and you see that.
So the eight-foot wall is doable, but you, you're saying that you're having a problem with the, uh, ten-foot barrier?
I believe it's doable. I haven't, I haven't checked with engineers yet. Yeah, see, there's a tree line right there. More trees in here, I mean, these, these trees right here are gonna come out 'cause we're gonna put that track.
Well, do you wanna postpone this until you go and figure out what you can do? Uh, I mean, if, if I live next door to this track, I, I would've hated for railroad to come right next to my garage.
Yep. How far, how far are you wanting, uh?
The city is recommending a ten-foot buffer and a masonry wall.
How long?
Uh, to the edge of the property, to the street.
To the edge of the red square, square?
It says right along the west perimeter.
Yeah, along the west perimeter.
All the way along the west perimeter from the top of the red line all the way down to the bottom of it.
Okay, so down this way?
Well, no, along the edge of the track.
You have your track going this way?
Yes, sir.
This would start from here all the way down to the street.
So it would start over here?
Yes, and go all the way up to the top.
That's what the condition is from the city.
Okay.
So, uh, we'd be happy to postpone this and, and let you, uh, let you go back and, and also you can negotiate with the, with the city, uh, planning department if there are some other things that you might be able to do to remedy this. Okay?
Okay.
The, the, the idea is just to protect the neighborhoods.
Sure.
Those guys bought the house not knowing that somebody's gonna come twenty years from then, put a railroad track there, right? So I'm sure they all have some good sense of humor, they wanna play, but we need to help them out also. All right, if that's the case, uh, I would make a motion to postpone this case until these folks come back.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Whoever's not happy, say something. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen, we get to see you again. Let's go to two zero two two dash two oh two.
Okay. Okay, PZ twenty twenty-two dash two oh two, um, is a request for a specific use permit to allow cell tower in a light industrial district. And Hathaway, representing SBA Network Services LLC proposes to construct a one hundred seventy-nine-foot-tall monopole cellular tower at eighty-four seventy-five Landis Drive, designed to support four antenna arrays allowing for colocations in the future. No city utilities will be required. Engineering recommended that the existing approach and gravel path located just west of the site be utilized, eliminating the need for a new driveway. The applicant agrees and is in the process of revising their lease agreement with railroad. The applicant intends to construct a six-foot chain-link fence with barbed wire around the lease area with crape myrtle trees along the Landis Road right away. Historically, a privacy fence with a solid gate has been required. There are power lines along the south right-of-way line of Landis Drive, so no trees will be allowed. Instead, a row of hedges will be required along the north and west edges of the lease site. The sides visible from residential properties to the northwest. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Um, adding, um, a condition to utilize the existing approach and gravel path located just west of the site instead of a new proposed driveway. Number two, provide a copy of the recorded access easement and lease agreement. Number three, provide a six-foot-tall wood or masonry fence to be constructed six feet inside the north and west perimeter edges of the lease site with a solid gate. And number four, provide a landscape buffer along the north and west edges of the tower site consisting of shrubs, saving except for the gated, gated area to meet zoning ordinance requirements. Notices was, notices were mailed to property owners. Four notices were sent and we received none in opposition and, uh, none in favor for this item. The slide that you see is the location, the red square or rectangle is the location for the proposed lease site. And this is the site plan that they provided us, showing where they were proposing to put the trees along that edge of Landis. A close-up showing a little better the land around the lease site. This is the subject property. You can see the railroad in the background. This is properties to the northwest, to the north. And that's all I have for you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the lady? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, uh, my name's Roger Garza. I'm here, uh, representing the applicant and athlete.
And your address, please?
My address is four thousand six Trento Court, Haiti, Texas.
Great. Uh, do you have any additional information you'd like to pass on to us?
No, uh, we've read all the requirements that we received from staff and we are gonna be updating our plans to, to match what is requested from this, from the staff.
And you do understand the three conditions?
Correct.
Right?
Four.
There's four.
Four.
Four, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Here, none. We're gonna close the public hearing. We heard from the staff, we also heard from the applicant, and he does understand the four conditions stated. And, uh, I will look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
With four conditions.
With the four conditions, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Next.
File PZ twenty twenty-two dash two oh four is a request to rezone a property from light industrial to general commercial multiple-family dwelling. Joseph Endori would like to rezone the property located at nine, eleven ninety, eleven ninety-two Gulf Street. Mr. Endori owns the entire north half of the block now and rest, the rest of the property is zone GCMD. Plans are to develop the property as a unit which needs the property to be consistently zoned. And staff recommend, recommends approval of the request. However, notices were mailed to property owners. There were ten notices mailed out. We received zero in, um, favor and four in opposition. Uh, protests against this request have been received from more than thirty-five percent of the owners of land within two hundred feet of the subject property at this time. And, um, I'll read a couple of the, um, notices that we received to you. We have one from MG Rail Properties stating that they object to the rezoning due to the twenty-four-hour operations by Tiger Rentals across from this parcel. There are truck lights, um, main, maintenance project noises, heavy equipment alarms, eighteen-wheelers loading and unloading, et cetera, which creates noise interference all day and night. And that was for two of the notices that we received. And then we received two others that did not specify why, but they are in opposition as well.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
And you said how many you had in opposition?
Four in opposition.
And that's more than thirty-five percent?
At this point, that consists of thirty-five percent of the surrounding, um, land. It's these two properties on the, um, to the west where Avalon would extend, all this property here as well as all of the property to the north of it.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions for Ms. Joseph? Okay, is the applicant here? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Endori, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Great. Do you have any additional information you'd like to use?
Well, this property, we have it, uh, we have multifamily in the middle, if you see it. We have P resident lived there, seven unit. They've been there almost fifteen years. We never had problem. The, the people who complain on the side, they approached me to, to purchase the property with an agree. And I think that's what, uh, but anyway, this here, the property, all what we're doing for low-income multifamily and, uh, this company here, I, I own the front, the, the fourteen ninety-five on Golf. I'm neighboring there, I've been there for almost thirty years. We never hear no noise. They open from eight to five and no noise, no, no, nothing to disturb anybody of the, and the, the house had been there forever. I mean, nobody complained about noise all the time.
All right, and you are gonna do this, uh, for low-income, single families, right?
Yes, low-income, uh, single family, most of them, they work from eight to five. They come back after five, they just go to sleep and go back to work.
All right. And you do understand that this is light industrial, so we do have to plant across the street? And there are inherent dangers with that, right?
Yes, but, uh, but if you, if you send any, there is no, no activity after five period over there in the area. I've been there for almost thirty years. After five o'clock, no activity period. I mean, they open from eight to five and after five, it's very quiet. I mean, you don't hear no noise, you don't hear nothing. Plus, I have, uh, I have all the property already rezoned to general commercial. Only those two lot, we purchased it later. And, uh, and we asking the commission if it's okay to, to make it on the general commercial for multifamily.
All right, any questions for the gentleman?
I've got a couple of questions. So this is, you're, you want to build multifamily?
Low income, yes.
Low income, which means there's probably gonna be children. Are you planning on putting a fence?
No, no, no children, it's single, one person.
One person?
One person. Efficiency is gonna be maximum three, three hundred square foot. Uh, like, like, uh,
Three hundred square foot?
Three hundred square foot, room, bathroom and kitchen. They just come spend the night and leave and go to work. I, I have, I have, uh, model the house now, I have seven unit the same way.
So if they don't go to work, they're still gonna hear the noise, though?
There is no noise, ma, you know, if you go check, there is no such a noise. Period, no noise, period. I mean, you can send anybody, you can go anytime in there if you hear any noise, you know, we stop, you know.
You own which other property?
Uh, the whole property. You see where the, uh, or, the, the purple? I own that all the way from MLK, Avalon and Golf.
Okay.
The whole, the whole block.
So that, that's your apartment?
Yes. The, the, the middle, there is a house in there, there is seven unit in there.
That's yours, too?
Yes, they've been living there for almost fifteen years. And quiet, no complaint.
Well, you said, 'cause I think the complaint was about the nighttime noise. So you live there and you know that noise?
Period, nothing, nothing move at night. Very quiet at night.
Well, I was asking, was that the?
He doesn't live there.
Oh, he doesn't live there?
No.
But I have tenants live there.
You got tenants, okay.
Never complained or any noise or I have some people, they've been with me ten years.
Okay.
So how do you know there's not gonna be any children there? Even visiting?
Because it's not made for, for more than one person. No children there, plus before we, we.
Is the area going to be fenced?
Yes, yes, we gonna put, uh, uh, iron fence, glass system.
Is this a special type? I mean, a three hundred square feet is like, uh, one car garage and maybe a half?
No, no car garage.
No, no, I'm just comparing size, what you're saying with the apartment.
It's, it's like a small efficiency hotel, motel, everything open, everything open. They go in there, they, they, I have some people now, they're doing the same thing. Everybody, they share, yeah, they live in there in one bedroom.
So it's an apartment or hotel?
Multifamily, yeah, like dormitory. The, the one it is now, but we gonna upgrade it, fix it, where they have their own bathroom, their own kitchen and, uh, every, everything separated.
And this is on a monthly rental or like a weekly rental?
Monthly, monthly rental. It's apartment kind, efficiency apartment for low income.
But it sounds like it's a hotel.
You, it's, it's not a hotel, it's a, you know, there is some apartment you go rent monthly and, uh, they have their own bathroom, their own kitchen and their own bedroom.
And I'm, I'm trying to just visualize it because most hotels is only two hundred square foot per room.
Yeah, this one, it'll be three, about three hundred to three hundred fifty per, you know, uh, per, per.
Mr. Getz?
Mr. Endori?
Yes.
Who is your target tenants? Where do you generally get your tenants from? And how much do you typically charge for monthly?
Six, six hundred a month and usually the low income where they are under SSI or government support.
Wow.
And most of them, they don't have car or they don't have, uh, transportation.
How do they go to work?
They use a bike or the subway or, or the bus.
Again, so, Mr. Endori?
Yes.
Are, are you trying to do this to benefit some people that might otherwise be homeless or what? What is that, I'm trying to imagine what this is?
Well, well, we, we, we gonna have it, we gonna, we can, we gonna accept everybody. If it's, uh, homeless, usually they don't stay in the home. They like to be on the street and some of them, they're homeless. They already have big house, but they don't go to it. They like to be on the street. But those guy, they, uh, they been have problem and, uh, they get government, uh, SSI and they have a job, some of them, and, uh, and, uh, we've been full all the time. So far, we've been doing very well in this house. Seven unit and always full. And they pay on time and we never have problem.
Let me rephrase the question for you. Your current tenants that are in your current apartment deal, what kind of jobs are they doing? What kind of work are they doing right now?
They do, uh, they work at McDonald, they work at Jack in the Box, they work at, uh, different, uh, fast food restaurant.
Gotcha.
And two of them, they work for me.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We might have to call you back in a minute.
Thank you.
We heard from Mr. Andori, and now I'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against?
Does this require a super majority?
It will for council, not today. Remember, they, they just make a recommendation to council for you guys, it will require.
It's over twenty-five percent. The lady in the pink, is that pink or peach? Peach, I'm sorry. I'm old like somebody you were sitting next to.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Figueres, and I'm representing Modern Group Real Properties. We are opposing this. I have a map that shows you, in blue are all of our properties that we own, starting, as you can see, Ashley and Avalon, all of that to the west side is ours. Mr. Andori, this is the property he's hoping to go. We actually do have a twenty-four-seven operation. Eighteen-wheelers are coming in and out all night long. We have air compressors that go off, we have heavy equipment alarms when they're backing up, we have forklifts. You see Avalon Gulf, Ashley, that is actually a repair shop that we do on all of our equipment that goes out, and especially during hurricane season and winter storms and everything, we have generators that go out, we're working on them, we have light poles, things like that. It is a twenty-four-seven operation, and we are very concerned about the noise complaints that would come from people living right across the street on Gulf Street. That is all basic industrial, commercial properties, but we don't shut down at five o'clock. We have eighteen-wheelers coming all night long. We have security on site, twenty-four-seven, so we do have a lot going on. We've, the railroad owns this part that is not in blue, we own everything else, and it is fully operational. So we are very concerned about that. We've been there forty years, and we're concerned about families being right up against our operations.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any question for the lady? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Anybody else?
I do have a few more slides I could show you that I didn't, I apologize, if you'd like to see them.
Why is it you're hoarding all those slides?
It's not on purpose.
All right, let's see, let's see the, the slides, and then we'll come back to you, sir. Go ahead. So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Okay. This is just another view of the subject property. And here from the ground is the subject property. That's to the north. This is to the northwest, to the west, and to the south. And this is Mr. Andori's house that he mentioned that he owns. So, there you go.
Go back to that house picture? Okay, thank you. Mr. Andori, you had some statements against your case, so this is a chance for you to tell us more information.
Yes, there is, there is about three, four houses, I think, around the Gulf, all the way, resident live, multifamily, I mean, resident live in their houses in there. They never have problem in there, and they've been there for a long time.
All right, anything else?
That should do it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And this house that I'm seeing the picture in here, is this, you, you have several people living here?
Yeah, this is gonna, is gonna be demolished and...
So you, you rent them room by room?
Right, and it's gonna be upgraded.
Is not, is not divided?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you, sir. Well, great. We've heard from the city, heard from the applicant, heard from the neighbors, so is your chance to make a motion?
I make a motion, we decline file PZ 2022-204.
I have a motion to reject. Is there a second?
Sorry, could you hear that? Okay.
Could you come in, sir, if you just...
Yes, sorry. I make a motion, we decline file PZ 2022-204.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, please, aye. Okay, the ayes have it, thank you very much, the motion is denied. Go to PZ 2022-205, please.
PZ 2022-205 is a request for a specific use permit to allow an event center in the Central Business District. Cameron Maraz has requested a specific use permit to open an event center at 308 Orleans Street, and states the property will be used for events such as baby or wedding showers and small intimate weddings. No food or drink will be provided. The Central Business District Zone does not require any onsite parking, vehicles will park on the street. In addition, the building is currently not sprinkled. Building occupancy will be a number well below one hundred and will need to remain at or below that number, whatever the number is, it's set by the fire department, or fire sprinkler system must be added. The planning staff recommends approval of the application with the following condition: Building must be sprinkled if occupancy load is found in excess of the number set by the fire department. Notices were mailed to fourteen property owners within two hundred feet. We received zero in opposition and zero in favor. And I do have a couple of slides for you, I remembered them this time. So the subject property is in red, or outlined in red. And a closer view of the subject property. This is your subject property. This is to the northwest, to the north, to the east, to the south, and to the west. And that's all I have for you.
How many square feet is this building?
Oh...
Let me locate it wrong.
I probably have it somewhere.
Seventy-one hundred?
Seventy-one.
I'm not sure why we're kicking the can down to fire department, because by the square footage, the number of people they can fit in there, it would be more than a hundred people. But we let the permit department worry about that. Great, let's hear from the applicant. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you?
Good.
If you would state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Carly Boudreau, and we're at 308 Orleans Street, Beaumont, Texas.
All right, do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Just with the square footage, I know you had brought it up, we don't use the entire space for the venue center, there's just a, like a very general area that's used for the venue space. The rest is used for office space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Normally, how you calculate this is by the square footage of the building?
Yes.
And how many people you can fit in there?
Yeah, we met with the fire marshal, and he explained it with us, and we showed him what area would be used, and he, yeah.
Great, go ahead, any other information you have?
No, sir.
And how would you have a wedding or a baby shower with no food or drink?
They would supply their own outside vendors.
You're not gonna prepare?
Right.
Okay, good. Any questions for the lady?
How, how many parking spaces you have?
So we don't have any parking spaces that we designated, street parking in downtown Beaumont. Like all the, the street parking on New, on Orleans Street and Liberty Avenue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're gonna go to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir. If you would come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm councilman A.J. Turner.
Well, that's okay. Well, see, you, you put that cap on, I don't, I don't recognize you.
But, so, so, I just want to compliment you guys on, you know, investing in downtown, it's pretty important, it's right now, and that building looks really good compared to what it was, I want to thank y'all, hopefully in front of everybody, by investing in downtown, investing in Beaumont. We appreciate, couldn't happen without. Cameron and Carly, they, they made it happen, they're, they came to me, so this is our idea, let's make it happen, I'm a hundred percent for the idea, I own the building, but awesome idea, I think that's, do more projects, thank you.
Mr. Neal, this is what you do before the election, remember that. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you with the hat on. Great. We, we heard from the city, and we heard from the applicant, she has already been in, in contact with the fire marshal, which is great, and we did not have any other public comments, so I would ask for a motion.
Motion to... Move for approval with the condition one?
We have a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you, and congratulations, good luck, folks. 2022-213.
PZ 2022-213 is a request for a rezoning of the property, of a property from residential single family to R M H, residential, multiple-family dwelling, highest density, or a more restricted district. Mr. Fred Vernon would like to rezon the properties located at 1020, 1060, and 1070 Sack Street, with intent to build an apartment complex on his lot at 1020 Sack Street. The property owners for 1060 and 1070 Vernon have agreed to the rezoning, eliminating a spot zoning issue. There are several apartment complexes in the area similar to the project proposed by Mr. Vernon. Staff recommends approval of the request. Notices were mailed to property owners, twenty-seven notices were sent, and we received zero in opposition and zero in favor. I do have slides to show you. The subject property is outlined in red. Closer view, so you see all the houses, for instance, around the property. This is the subject property currently, and these are the other two houses that agreed to be part of this request. This is the property to the east, to the south, also to the south, southwest, west, to the north, and to the northeast.
Any other picture you are adding?
No.
All right. Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. How are you today?
Good afternoon, I'm doing well, thank you.
If you would state your name and address for the record, please?
Fred Vernon, 2040 Wilms Avenue, Port Arthur, Texas.
And you have any other information you'd like to pass on to us, Mr. Vernon?
No, sir, just thank everyone for their time and the opportunity to try to build better here in Beaumont.
So you're taking these houses and making how many apartments?
It's gonna be a twelve unit.
Twelve units, and what type of apartments are these, sir?
Just normal, no, no specification.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman?
Is this single story or two-story?
I believe it's two-story.
Two-story.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you all.
Good. We're gonna start the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case?
Taylor Neal, reside at 1538 West Lucas, Beaumont, Texas. I've had the opportunity to know Fred Vernon and work with Fred for the last several years, and Beaumont is very blessed to have Fred Vernon wanting to invest in Beaumont, fully support this project, and I have no doubt he'll do a first-class job.
Good, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. John Young, 4820 Wyatt, I'm against, that's right across the street from my house, and I don't want it there. Okay?
Well, great, thank you for coming and telling us.
And I got a neighbor that, on y'all end of agreement?
Well, they can, they can come.
Oh.
So there's one. Good, anybody else that would like to speak?
Adina, can you tell us how many responses was?
Zero, zero.
Zero, zero.
Zero, zero.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
All right.
Your name and address, please?
Virgie Coburn, 4860 Wyatt Street.
Forty-eight sixty, how far do you live from this?
Right around the corner.
Right around the corner.
Where there's some apartments right across the street from me also.
All right.
And I deny a check.
And you are against this?
Yes.
Okay. Any other reasons for it?
We are surrounded by apartments, some on Park Street, Florida and Park, some on the one across the street on Wyatt Street, now you wanna put some on Sack? There's all around us, and it's already traffic jammed. You put these young people in there, they fight, policeman comes, guns, traffic jams, it's just too much, it's just not a good area for some more apartments.
All right, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If you don't mind, let me hear from this lady, and then we'll, we'll get you. Go ahead. She's halfway down the road. Good afternoon to you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And your name and address, please?
Me, I'm George, 4840 Wyatt Street.
Okay.
It's right round the corner from them.
Yes.
And I wouldn't like it, want it there either. Just like the other lady said, we are surrounded with apartment, all four corners, we have two on Park Street, Florida, you know, we just going round and round and round.
All right, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Councilman?
Chris Dureo, Wolford City Council, I just wanna make it known to everybody that there is a need for this, currently there is a housing shortage, especially in that part of town. So by this twelve units, this could be twelve families that could have somewhere to stay, and it's a need for this right now. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
That area, I'm familiar with it, and out of curiosity, some of those apartment complexes that we're mentioning that's around it, it seems like they're very large, so we're looking at maybe, some could be up to thirty, forty units, twenty to thirty units. With the applicant, I think it'd be a lot easier and to manageable, so if it's a smaller unit, they can kind of control who comes in and out, because their concern is safety and the whole nine. And with the housing shortage, I think it'd be important to know if, you know, with this applicant, you know, we can ask them, knowing how to see screeners, employees, or tenants, to see how they would be, good, bad, or actually, probably do we do background checks, the whole nine, because I'm not sure if all the other apartments do that around there, but I know they can play a big role in the quality of people you have moving in their rental property.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against? Yes, ma'am, good afternoon to you. How are you doing this afternoon?
Wonderful.
Thank you for coming.
Sir, my name is Michael Smith, and I live...
My name is, uh, Michael Smith, and I live, uh, at nine seventy Sack. And, uh, I am totally against it, and I'm quite sure that the city have, uh, plenty of room to grow elsewhere. Because, uh, we have people speeding up and down the roads at night. Looks like about once a week, we hear, I'm waking up with gunshots. Some nights I can't sleep. And so it's just awful. We don't need no more, uh, people coming in. And, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm legally blind, so, uh, really, we really don't need that in our neighborhood. I wish that, uh, I seen on the news the other day that they have other lands and stuff that they developing. So we wish that they would move on to other, some other place. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Good afternoon ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Johnson. I'm speaking in Athens of my son. He's out of town. He's at forty-eight eighty Wyatt. And I disagree that they don't need any more apartments in that area. I have a Ring Doorbell. I live like two minutes from my, from forty-eight eighty Wyatt. And when the Ring Doorbell sends us alerts, we get a lot of alerts around Wyatt, Sack, Sacks, all that area with police, gunshot shooting, dad stabbing, and I don't think those apartments, any more apartments need to be. It's enough crime in that area to add another apartments there, and all that's gonna do is just increa- increase the crime for the senior citizens that lives in that area. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Gentleman in the back. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon sir. My name is Akram Khalil. Uh, I'm gonna speak in favor of this project. Um, I graduated from Lamar. It's not far from there. I understand their concerns with safety, but, um, I feel like if, uh, the, you know, the city puts a little bit more, uh, police in the area, will address a lot of their concerns. There are a lot of students that go to Lamar. They need houses also in that area. So, uh, I think what Mr. Fred Vernon is trying to do here is, uh, is gonna be a positive thing, especially if he's screening his, his tenants.
Could you state your address, I'm sorry?
Uh, my address, uh, would you like physical or a P.O. box? P.O. box two eight three, Beaumont, Texas, downtown seven 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 oh four.
Thank you sir.
You're welcome sir. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Can I say one more thing? Anything, everyone that stood, do not live in the area.
Sir, you have to approach the mic to be addressed by the chairman.
Once again, everyone that stood up here that stood up for that project do not.
Forgive me, if you state your name again, so I can.
John Young, forty-eight twenty Wyatt. Now everyone that stood up here that stood up for that project do not live in that area, and they don't know what's going on. Like everybody said, we have enough apartment complex, and we don't need no extra complex in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're gonna close the public hearing now, and Mr. Vernon, you had several neighbors that are not happy. So, uh, uh, you have a chance to rebut, give us other information you might have.
Um, first I'd like to thank everyone that came out and supported the project, and I'd also like to thank those who came out in opposition to the project. But I'd like to say this. I wanna make a clear distinction between apartments and the, the points that the, those in opposition made of crime. Uh, and I feel, it's fair to say that I think most of them had the issue, it's crime, 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 and it's gonna be bad for peop- for them that are there, uh, they're living there. I wanna make one thing very clear. I am a person that's very organized, very detailed, and I like everything to be clean and, and done properly. I am not, I don't like crime. I don't like, I, I don't like in my own neighborhood. I don't like for my tenants. It's not good for anybody. But with all due respect, I think that is an issue that is supposed to be addressed by the police department, the council, and, and other, other, you know, concerned stakeholders. That does not mean that this project is gonna be, bring crime. It's not gonna bring crime. In fact, I'd, I'd offer the contrary, in that the beautification, uh, this type of project, beautifying the city, uh, gated, uh, I'm gonna make sure that the, uh, security is there, and also, again, screening and background checking the tenants before they are approved and allowed to live there. Just because the other, the other apartment complexes around the area allow crime and other things in their, their vicinity, doesn't mean that I'm gonna do the same. I can guarantee you that I won't. I'm here to make sure that I, I have a house for hard, homes for hard-working people, and there's a need for that in the city of Beaumont. Uh, while it's unfortunate that there is crime in that area, it, it, I won't be adding to that problem. I'll be helping to make it better by having, uh, staff and security there if needed. Making sure that good, hard-working Beaumont residents and hard-working Americans are living in those twelve units. Um, so I, I'd like to make that distinction, and I'd ask, I'd ask the board to understand it. I'm not bringing crime. I'm bringing hard-working families to the area.
And you said this is gonna be all gated?
Yes, I would, it's gated right now. It just needs to gate across the front. Yes sir.
Question for you. All the property, the, the properties that exist, are you gonna have those demolished to build your complex?
I'm just gonna have that, the one, uh, uh, furthest to the right, uh, in the side of the red box, that one's gonna be demolished. Yes sir, and those trees are gonna be cleaned off of that property.
Okay, and what direction is your, uh, complex is gonna face?
It'll be facing the road.
Park Street or the?
Uh, Sack Street.
Sack Street.
Yes sir.
So are there currently residents in ten twenty, ten sixty, and ten seventy?
Uh, no ma'am. I, I, uh, after the tenant that was there decided to, uh, to leave, uh, I decided not to, uh, to refill it because of the project.
Okay. So the only one, and forgive me, I can't tell from this, is it ten seventy that's gonna be demolished?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, ten twenty I believe.
Ten twenty, the other side. Okay. And what's gonna happen to ten sixty and ten seventy?
Uh, they're, they're still there, and they've already signed a, a, approval of the project.
So you already have a lease on those?
Uh, no ma'am, they're, they're living there now.
People are still there?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vernon does not own the other two properties.
Ah, okay, thank you.
But they did sign, sign on board for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you sir.
Thank you.
We've heard from the staff and also the neighbors and the applicant, and he had a chance to revisit with us. Uh, with that, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in oppositions? One opposition. Thank you. Alright, let's go to, uh, PZ two zero two 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 one five.
PZ twenty twenty-two dash two one-five is a request for a specific use permit to allow duplex in residential single-family dwelling district. Um, Akram Khalil is requesting a specific use permit to allow duplex at eighty-three twenty San Carlos Street. And, I have things out of order now. Excuse me just a minute. Okay, he's going to build one structure, creating two new one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six square foot residences approximately. Uh, the property is surrounded by single-family homes and vacant lots in a residential single-family district. As, uh, this duplex will be located in residential single-family zoning, an eight-foot water masonry screening fence, and a ten-foot wide landscape buffer with trees that meets city ordinance will be required along the northeast and south property lines. Staff recommends approval of this request with the following conditions. Landscaping and screening, um, shall be installed to meet zoning ordinance requirements. Notices were mailed to twenty-seven property owners within two hundred feet, and we received zero in favor and three in opposition. So, let me screen some of these oppositions to you. One is just asking for more, um, details, I believe, on what the project will be. And then I have one that says, "I don't want a duplex nor any not single-family home platted within, placed within the area of my property." And then I have one more that states, "We have lived in our home for forty-seven years. We love the small, quiet, and very low-crime rate neighborhood. We want our neighborhood to remain single-family dwellings. Please help us remain this way." And I do have some slides for you. The subject property is outlined in red on the screen. Um, this is the site plan showing the two units with the parking spaces. Um, this is the existing, or an aerial view of the existing property. There is still a house on the property. This is the subject property. It's to the north, to the west, and to the south. And that's all I have for you.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon sir. If you would state your name and address for the record please.
Uh, my name is Akram Khalil, and my address is P.O. box two eight three, Beaumont, Texas.
Alright sir.
Triple seven oh four.
Do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Um, I'm more than, um, willing to cooperate with the landscaping, uh, that's required as a buffer, as well as the fencing. Um, I think that's much needed in that area. Most of those homes don't, don't even have landscaping. Um, I, I do it just out of making, uh, the area more attractive and pretty and nice and clean, help the environment too. Um, that house has been abandoned for a very long time. Uh, it's really, uh, beyond the point of repair in my opinion. I like to start fresh from the ground up. And, uh, because of the housing shortage, I figured why not have it look like a single-family home, but have two, uh, two families living in it, you know? It's not that large, it's not gonna, you know, um, you know, attract huge families. Uh, it's just, you know, couple, uh, bedroom, woman, one bath, or bath and a half kinda thing, where we haven't gone forward with full-blown plans just yet, just, um, kinda preliminary, depending on y'all's decision, then we'll, you know, look into the engineering of such, which then would go through the approval process at that point, but for the time being, we would like that request to be granted. I, um, actually grew up in that area, and, um, you know, uh, some homes over the time have been deteriorating, unfortunately, but I mean, that's, that's what it is. Um, and we're trying to beautify the area, generate more property taxes so that we can, you know, hire more police. It sounds like that's a major problem, uh, based on the previous concerns. But regardless, uh, beautifying the area, having a positive spillover, improving the neighborhood, and that, like I say, that house needs to go. So regardless, it's, that, that's a, I feel like it's a much-needed thing in that neighborhood, because it's a eyesore for sure, and a hazard. It's in the hap- it's not inhabitable.
Good. Thank you sir.
Absolutely.
Any questions for the gentleman?
Do you own this property?
Come again sir.
Do you own this property?
Uh, my business partner does, and I have a, a part share in it, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you sir.
Absolutely.
Uh, we're gonna now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Gentleman in the, good afternoon sir. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is, uh, Robert West. I go by Bobby. And I live at eighty-two fifty-five San Carlos. It's a little bit ironic, we live to the west of this property, and our name is West. So, we're the west, to the west of the property. Uh, we're opposed to this, my wife and I are. Uh, we've lived there for forty-seven years, as the lady, uh, read, and we're, I think, very familiar with the, the atmosphere, so to speak, of the neighborhood. If you go about a quarter of a mile from our house, you get on Major Drive, which is just lined with apartment after apartment after apartment on both sides, as you know. And we don't want that type of atmosphere to spill over into our neighborhood, to get that way. I think a duplex would, would begin that, in a way, and, uh, we're opposed to it. Our house flooded during Harvey. We had four feet of water in a no flood zone, as a lot of people did. And, uh, we had to move out, and we stayed in an apartment out on Major Drive, and we were grateful and thankful for that place to stay. But the atmosphere is really different in apartments, if you're familiar with that. We never met the people next to us. We never met the people u- upstairs that were making a lot of noise at night. But, uh, in this neighborhood, we know everyone around us. We're familiar with them. We're friends. We help one another. We care for one another. And, uh, I think that this, uh, building a duplex there will, will be a hindrance to that type of atmosphere that we have. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Any questions for the gentleman? Nope. Okay, thank you. The gentleman in the back. Good afternoon sir.
How you doing today?
Doing very well.
Uh, my name is Kyle Daniel, and I live at seventy-one fifty-five Carol Lane, Beaumont, triple seven one three, which is not near the property that you're talking about. However, I own the property at sixty-nine twenty Guest Road, which is, um, across Guest Road from where the dwelling is he's talking about, and I own San Diego, which is butts up to the back of the property. And like he had stated, uh, there, ser- the whole neighborhood flooded during Harvey, as did lots of Beaumont. And so, the homes that were there flooded, a lot of them were tore down. The home that he said had been, uh, vacant for a long time, it's been vacant for probably two years, I believe. I'm not sure exactly whenever the gentleman that lived there passed away. Like Mr. West had stated, that whole neighborhood is, they call it, we call it the nucleus, cause everybody stayed there for forty or fifty years, and it's been that way all this time. Mr. Chapman, Mr. Drew, um, uh, just the whole neighborhood. So it's a really quiet, calm neighborhood. With a lot of the homes that have been torn down from Harvey, and Amelda, uh, did some flooding on, on, um, San Carlos also. Um, the lots came open, people started building homes in there. Some of them are hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar newer homes that are being built, which is what's gonna bring that neighborhood back. Putting rental houses in there, that's not gonna do it. What'll happen, you'll have people come in, they'll stay true to their years, they'll move out, and understand they'll get positioned in financial matters to where that they could go and buy a home, and that's great. But if we go and take all of these lots that are open, and build, and change things to a, a multiple-dwelling or multiple-family home, uh, setting, then you're not gonna be able to build something on it and sell it as a property that you would, with it cleared off right now. Um, another part of it is also, is putting a, a, a multiple-family, uh, home on that lot. There's, there's cars over there now that park in the street. They park all up down San, San Carlos and San Diego, where fire trucks couldn't get by if they had to. The police, I've called the police several times on cars that have parked on San Diego, where I can't get by pulling a small trailer to go mow my lot, or to mow my rental property. The rental property I have, sixty-nine twenty Guest Road, and I promise you, if, if my renters came in here, they swear that they thought I was stealing the military from the way I make them take care of their house. Most rental properties are not done in a way. And I'd be afraid that if that happened with the duplex that he's talking about, then you'd be open, opening Pandora's box, because if he got away with it, then somebody else is gonna come and buy a lot, and they're gonna wanna do it, and on and on and on. And so, if, if we can't, you know, keep it like it's supposed to be, then where, where do we stop at whenever we get to where we're going with it? So.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes?
Fred Vernon, uh, twenty forty Williams Avenue, Port Arthur, Texas. Um, I was just looking at the front of that house, and it's, it's dilapid, it's, it's vacant home, I believe. Um, just as another business owner that's looking to invest and work hard to beautify the city, I mean, those houses are potentially, that are dilapidated and vacant. If there's something that's not done about them, number one, they're not being on the city's tax roll. Number two, they become potential squatting centers for, uh, for, for, uh, people without homes, people that are trying to cause problems. And so, you know, being that we're investing here in the city, myself, other, other folks, um, just. um, just speaking on behalf of this project, I, I know Akram, he's a good man. I didn't know he was gonna be here today, but I just wanna speak on behalf of this project. Anytime you can get a, a, a old dilapidated home, it's gonna collect more, potentially be a squat for, for, uh, other folks that wanna cause trouble, it's a good deal. Get, get it off and get it back on the tax roll, but I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Uh, I'm sorry, sir, you've had your chance. Thank you. Uh, we've closed the public hearing. Mr. Khalil, you had a couple of negative items from the neighbors, so, uh, you have a chance to speak to them.
I appreciate all that are in favor, as well as those who oppose and bring their concerns forward. Um, I've done some development around town, and I do my very best to uplift the area and to, uh, bring in the right people that, you know, are gonna treat my property the right way and give them an opportunity, like he said, uh, to possibly expand into having a home and not living under the pressure of rent. Um, you know, the other component is, there's only a few lots left. I mean, it's fully, you know, it's an occupied neighborhood, so I don't foresee, you know, any apartment complex or the threats of, or the negative, uh, or cons that come with apartment complexes. This is just a small, little house, you know, um, starter home for people that mostly, uh, work or go to school or have, you know, a, a kid or two. Um, so it's, you know, it's not, you know, a huge project or, you know, apartment complex by any means. And I understand that he's, you know, there's some concerns regarding, you know, others coming in and, and doing what I'm doing. I mean, it's, most of them are occupied homes, and a lot of them are being fixed up, and yes, there are a few brand-new ones. And this is just another one of those brand-new ones that looks just like everybody else. It blends in nicely. It's gonna have a large driveway, um, so we shouldn't have, uh, heavy traffic there. Um, and again, it's, uh, money generated for the city to address crimes and other expansions around the town that are, you know, however way you allocate your funds.
Thank you, sir.
So I'll do my best to make it look as pretty and nice, and I'll try to hire, uh, um, bring in quiet, respectable families that are gonna treat my property right, and the neighbors.
What size lot is this?
It's a fifty by one, or sixty roughly, by a hundred-and-twenty-five or a hundred-and-thirty.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, we've heard from the city and also the applicant, the neighbors, and, uh, I would entertain a motion now.
I have a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. We go to, uh, two-zero-two-two-two-one-eight.
To allow a bar in the G-C-M-D, um, district. Jisun Maknoya is requesting a specific use permit to allow a daiquiri bar at twenty-nine forty-nine College Street, Suite one-twenty. And that bar will occupy a thirteen-hundred-square-foot suite in the existing Mars Plaza. It will include a full bar available for onsite consumption. Some food will also be available for purchase. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, ten a.m. till midnight, Saturday, ten a.m. till one a.m., and Sunday, ten a.m. till midnight. Staff recommends approval with the following condition: It must meet all requirements via water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or pretreatment programs. Notices were mailed to twenty-seven property owners within two-hundred feet, and we received zero in opposition, zero in opposition and zero in favor. And I do have slides to show you. The property outlined in red is the Mars Plaza. And this is a site plan showing the Mars Plaza. I believe the location, um, for this, um, suite is gonna be on that property on the, on the south strip there, somewhere in the middle of it. But I'm, I'm hoping the, the applicant can specify exactly where it's gonna be located. And this is a closer view, so you can see Mars Plaza. This is subject property. Another view of the subject property. This is to the rear of the subject property, and across the street, you can see the properties to the south. And that's all I have for you.
Any questions? Thank you. Uh, is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman.
Yes, sir. And your name and address, please?
Jisun Maknoya, twenty-nine, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine forty-nine College Street, Suite number one-twenty, Beaumont, Texas, seven-seven-seven-zero-one.
All right, sir. You have any additional information that you'd like to give us?
Uh, no, Your Honor.
This is gonna be, uh, a normal, a, a bar, right? So there are people that would be sitting inside, consuming alcohol, right?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Um, not your typical bar. It's, uh, servings are with alcohol, but it's a daiquiri. It's a slushy form of alcohol.
Okay. And is this your first business of this type?
This will be my third business.
Perfect. So you know, you've done this before?
Yes, Your Honor.
Great, great, okay. Uh, any questions for the gentleman?
Where do you have these two locations, other two locations?
Uh, the first location's in Highland, Texas. Uh, it's a, um, spin-off of an actual daiquiri bar. It's not a standalone. Uh, in my gas station, we have implemented a particular BG license that allows us to serve alcohol servings behind the cash register. And, uh, we've implemented this in Highland, Texas, as well as Major Drive, um, eighty-four thirty, Phelan Boulevard, which was, uh, quite ironically installed today for operations. Uh, Cruisin' Market is the location here in Beaumont.
What kind of food will you be serving? Is it cooked there, or?
Uh, there's not a traditional type of serving of food. It's more of mixtures of, um, add-ons to the daiquiris, such as candies, uh, particularly like gummy bears, um, chamoy, um, tarheen. Uh, it's small finger food that is added as a topping.
No machines or anything in this facility?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, we have applied for a five-game machine permit for this location. And, um, we were told it's contingent upon the S.P. unit approval.
So what kind of machines are you gonna have in your place?
Your Honor, these are going to be eight-liner machineries, a total of five.
Okay, I just didn't see that mentioned in this application.
Yeah. We had held off on it because, uh, the planning and zoning had, um, restrictions, uh, prior to the approval of the S.P.U., S.U.P. So we left that on the back burner until and unless we received the S.U.P., that's what we were told. Without the S.U.P., we would not be granted the five machinery.
Did you know about the permit?
Yes, uh, five machines are allowed by state law to be located in any existing business. So once this business is existing, as long as they meet the zoning requirements, which it would, and they meet all the, um, requirements, the distance requirements from a church, school, or hospital, then they are automatically allowed for to have five machines. And that's why you see them in all the gas stations, for instance, and such, convenience stores.
To add on to that, Your Honor, um, there are businesses in that shopping center, um, that have machinery and that have been approved. Uh, one that I know for sure is the Cloud Smoke Shop, which is two doors down from us, right next to C.C.'s, C.C.'s Pizza. There is, uh, an additional, uh, full-fledged game room, which is at the corner of the adjacent building. Um, if you look at the tip of the L shape where the two buildings connect, uh, I believe the shopping center is Texas Fiesta or Magic Fiesta.
Uh, Dina, do you know how old those businesses are?
I can't give you an exact date, but I do know that the one that, um, there is one there that's a full-blown, um, gaming room, and it's grandfathered. It's been there since before we required that they have the S.U.P. and G-C-M-D for, for the number of games that they have.
But the other ones have the S.U.P.?
No, they're grandfathered.
All of them are grandfathered?
Well, the ones that have the five machines, like I said, that's a state law that up to five machines, they can have it in existing business. So, um, but for the one that has more than five machines, it's grandfathered. It's been there since before we started requiring the S.U.P.s.
Any other questions?
So you said there was already three existing, uh, five-liners in, in, in the same complex?
That I've physically seen, uh, two I can confirm with you, Your Honor. Uh, first one is the Cloud Smoke Shop, which is right next to C.C.'s. Um, you can visibly see three machineries. That's what I've seen in there. Um, I'm sure there's two additional ones, probably concealed, most, more than likely. And, um, at the tip of that L where the buildings two connect, right at that, uh, beginning of that second building, there is a Magic Fiesta, which has been there quite some time. I would say at least more than eight to ten years.
We're adding to the problems, guys. That's, that's the sad part of it.
Yeah.
Any, uh, well, thank you, sir.
Yes, Your Honor.
I have one more quick question.
Yes.
How many staff do you anticipate? If you're gonna be open from ten in the morning till midnight?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a total of six staff members that are currently pending, um, for job approvals, um...
How many per shift?
There's gonna be two per shift.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Councilman?
I don't see why we want any more game machines in, or, or Beaumont. Too many problems with them. Always on the news, they're getting raided. The gambling. I mean, I don't see what, what's the, there's no need for it. I mean, you can open your daiquiri shop, instead of already have machines in that complex. And I know for a fact there are places along Fourth Street that already have right around the corner. So, I mean, it's, it's adding to the problem, and we don't need to do that. And, uh, and this will come before me on council. I don't know if I can vote for it if it's gonna have those gaming machines in it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Neal?
I'd like to second. Councilman Merdureo said, uh, this is not the type of business that I feel that we need in Beaumont, and I couldn't support this project either.
Thank you. Hi, there, ma'am.
I also ask that you not approve it, because we don't need any more game, gaming rooms.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, the councilman?
Ethel, I'm not supporting game rooms.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I, I feel the need to make a statement, or at least explain, I guess. Um, if any other business was to come into that, I would say a little restaurant was to open in that space, that does not require a specific use permit, they can apply for the five machines, and they will be approved as long as they're not within the required distance of a hotel, uh, no, I'm sorry, a hu- a hospital, school, or, um, yeah, church. So it, that's why the request isn't including the machines, because the machines aren't really part of the request today, so. I just thought I'd help you, maybe help understand.
What's the distance from the hospitals and schools?
Three hundred feet from door to door is for a, um, church, um, or a hospital. I believe it's thousand feet that we notify for schools. And that's, I believe, property line to property line. They have to notify the school, and the school has the opportunity to, to comment or have opposition.
So, uh, the school on Blanchett Street, is that within that distance? Is it behind this place?
I, I don't remember. I'd have to tell you.
Or Baptist Hospital?
Now, for the, I'm thinking about the alcohol distance. For gaming rooms, it's property line to property line, and it is three hundred feet. So I'd have to, I'm not sure. I believe that they already had a, a distance. They, we have a form that they can request and do, to, to measure the distance and check it. And I believe they've already requested that form and already had it checked out and approved, but I'm not sure about that. I'd have to check on it for you.
Does the, uh, hospital include, uh, medical clinics?
I would have to go back and read the state law on that for you.
No. That has to be designated as a hospital, which means a certificate of occupancy wouldn't need to say a hospital. And same for a church. If it's not designated as a place of worship or a religious place of worship, for example, if that church, um, if that building was maybe like in a commercial shopping center and they were just using it and hadn't gotten a certificate of occupancy to designate it as a place of worship, then they wouldn't be counted, um, when we did property line to property line. So they have to have, be registered as a, a place of worship or as a hospital on their certificate of occupancy.
Any other questions or comments? And, uh, we did ask for, uh, any other comments on the public side, and now we're gonna close the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant, the city, and also several of the council, uh, that stated their opinion. With that, I would look for a motion.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Uh, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So are we denying the game room and the daiquiri shop, or just the game room, or both?
We're, we're denying the case as it's presented for a daiquiri shop right now. He probably can come back. The S.U.P. for the daiquiri shop. And he can, uh, reapply for something else, I'm not sure. But as it's presented, it's denied.
Objection, Your Honor.
Did, did I, did that answer your question? Mr. Beatty?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we did take a vote?
No, we need to.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next case, please.
Uh, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, motion's back here. You didn't get a rebuttal for question, for rebuttal to question the audience with the objections.
That's true. You, please come back and, and, go ahead. Come back and, and state your name and address again, and we'll go, we'll do this.
Sure.
That might change somebody's mind.
Jisun Maknoya, twenty-nine, uh, forty-nine College Street, Suite one-twenty, Beaumont, Texas, seven-seven-seven-zero-one. Um, to start off, we are not applying for game machine or game room. Just to be clear, the differentiation between a game room and having five machines is completely different. This application is not for a game room. City of Beaumont has an ordinance that clearly details what a day, game room is defined as. Anything more than five machinery is considered a game room. In addition to that, um, there is a lot of misconceptions from the audience stating that this is a game room, which is not, in fact, true. Um, we have not applied for a game room. We're not seeking a game room. This is strictly a daiquiri bar. If the city allows to have approval for the five machines, great. But that is not contingent upon our business model. Furthermore, I mean, um, based on that, the SUP is a small hurdle for us. I mean, it's not something that's gonna be major or deter us from having a daiquiri shop there. Uh, let me add to the council member that we can apply for a to go off-premise permit without the requirement for a SUP. So, given that, we will change our business strategy towards a off-site premise where we are not required to have SUP. In addition to that, we will apply thereafter for five additional machinery in state, city, and county accordance to the law. So, um, I leave it at that and I yield back.
Are you the gentleman that came before us on Major Drive?
No, your honor, I'm not.
But you've come before us, before you're from Sugarland, correct?
Yes, your honor, I have.
Yeah.
Commissioner, can please turn on your mic?
I'm so sorry.
I, I recognize the arrogance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal?
Uh, Mr. Attorney, the state law for the five machines?
Yes, sir. So any existing business, restaurant, car wash, gas station, can apply. Now, as you know, that there is, there has been some recent activity in legislative where they recently said that they were unconstitutional. However, that particular statute has not been repealed, and so any existing business, um, as long as they meet the zoning requirement, can have up to five game rooms.
What would the city of Beaumont have to do to make it from this point forward now only legal?
Well, there is already a pending, um, ruling that, from the Texas, uh, constitution says it's illegal. It has been appealed and it's on its way up to the Texas Supreme Court. Um, I'm happy to discuss that with you, um, outside of the public hearing, but there's nothing that the city could do to, I guess, trump uh, state law at this point. If the, if the state law has not been overturned and allows for that five, that's why our game room, um, ordinance starts with, uh, more than five. Um, because that state law allows for that in any existing business. Now, businesses that come before you for a SUP, um, as she, as Ms. Denise Howard explained, are not existing businesses until they can get a certificate of occupancy. And so because of that, that's what needs to happen in order for them to meet the state requirement to be an existing business.
Mr. Duriel?
Mr., uh, so I'm not going to ask you, can, we can deny this for a call?
You can deny it because you don't want a daiquiri shop. You don't wanna issue a, a SUP for a daiquiri shop, and you guys aren't denying it. It would be the commission that's denying it. And then when it came, come before you to counsel, you would be reviewing the commission's decision to deny it. But right now, you're only looking at it as if it's going to be, um, a daiquiri, a daiquiri shop. At any point, um, the applicant could decide, you know what, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have the five game room machines too much. It's not a hassle. I don't wanna do it. But that aside, would you still want a daiquiri shop there? Should be the question that you and both the commissions should be deciding upon whether or not the daiquiri shop is going to be something that would add value at that location, whether or not withholding or providing a SUP would be in the best interest of that shopping center.
So we're setting a precedence that we're not doing daiquiri shops from here on?
Not for that location.
It's just for that location, but someone else could come and say they wanted daiquiri shop at a different location?
Any other questions or comments?
Do we need to revote? Do we need to vote again?
Is a SUP required for a daiquiri shop?
SUPs are required not for specific businesses, but based on locations. So to answer your question, yes and no, depending on where that business is located.
Um, second part of the question is, if we decide not to do on-premise, do we need a SUP requirement?
So I'm gonna decline to answer that because that would be me giving you legal advice, and I'm gonna ask that you kinda consult with our planning department after the meeting to, to decide. Based on whatever happens here, based on how that should move forward, based on what your options would be after that.
Your honor, I'd like to...
All right, uh, your time's over. Thank you, sir. Okay, so, uh, I would ask for a second round of motions.
Motion stands as it is.
I second that motion because I...
That's an inappropriate motion because we withdrew the last motion. You'd have to make an official motion to either approve or deny.
Motion to deny again.
And I second that motion. We don't need a daiquiri shop in that area.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask that you make the motion as you would in the past, so it'd be a motion to deny, file, PZ. It, it has to be the full. Just think like the last motion never happened, so we need to clarify it for the record.
Motion PZ-two-zero-two-two-dash-two-one-eight is denied.
I second that motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? One opposition. Thank you. Motion's denied. Ms. Jordan, that was it? Fantastic. Madam Mayor?
I've got one more.
Oh, I don't have one more in here.
There you go.
Did I miss one?
Wait, twenty-six?
Twenty-six. Two-twenty-six.
Two-twenty-six.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You're right.
Forgive me. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Xavier Williams is requesting permission for a construction business with a lay-down yard at thirteen-twenty Caldwell Avenue. This property was owned residential multiple family dwelling, highest density, and occupied by a house until it burned and was demolished in twenty-nineteen. A commercial structure is located at the corner of the lot, and the current owner wished to use, sorry, the building for commercial purposes, although it had sat vacant for several years. So the property was rezoned from RMH to GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling. Mr. Xavier constructed a new storage building on the property without the benefit of a permit. He then began to operate a construction business and parked dump trucks on the property without a certificate of occupancy. Due to the property being used as a lay-down yard, Mr. Xavier's construction business and his construction business, a specific use permit is required for a GCMD zoning district. This use is not compatible with the other uses around the subject property. Properties to the north, east, and south are residential and occupied by residential single-family homes. Although a neighborhood grocery store sat at the, this location for many years, it was compatible with the adjacent uses. A construction business with outside storage for equipment and dump truck parking would be detrimental to the residential neighborhood. In his letter, Mr. Xavier states that three dump trucks will be kept at this location. No parking for the dump trucks or the vehicles for the drivers that would, um, man the, the dump trucks are shown on the site plan. If the applicant is approved and parking is planned on the property, a six-foot wide landscape strip will be required between any off-street parking areas and the street. Those landscape strips are required to have three-foot-tall wall, berm, or hedge for the length of the parking area. In addition, the property to the west along the north end of the property is owned residential multiple family dwelling, highest density. If approved, a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer with trees and an eight-foot wood or masonry screening fence is required along the portion of that property that borders the RMH zone properties. Staff recommends denial of the request. Notices were mailed to twenty-six property owners within two-hundred feet of the property. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition, and I do have some slides to show you. The subject property is outlined in red. And this is the site plan that was submitted for the subject property. Uh, the small rectangle kind of on the left-hand side, I guess. I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, on the left-hand side is the, um, storage building that Mr. Xavier built on the property. And this is aerial photography showing the properties around the subject property. This is a photo of the subject property with the storage building on the left-hand side of the screen. The neighborhood grocery that's been there for many years is that right hand, on the right-hand side of the screen, the small building with the little square window on it. That's the building right there in, in front of you is the grocery, what used to be a grocery. This is also the subject property. He's fenced in the rear of the property. You can see some of the equipment sticking up over the fence. Uh, this is to the northwest, to the north, east, east, southeast, south, south, and to the west of the property. And that is all that I have for you.
Any questions for the ladies?
Is city is going to be approved, this project?
Sorry?
Denied. No, it's, city is approving this.
We recommend denial of the project.
The, the wood fence that I saw, that belongs to the next business?
The wood fence? Let's see. You mean this picture?
Uh-huh.
That's his fence that he put up along the property line.
On the street side?
On the street side.
And on the backside, what do we have?
Neighboring the business to the west? Hmm. Uh, nothing in that picture.
Small storage building.
There's a little storage building with the little, um, chain-link fence next to it, and the large building behind that is the commercial business to the west.
Well, uh, it looks like there is a big business on the west side with a whole bunch of trucks in there, right?
Oh. All that borders that property is a very large, the back of the, the, the large warehouse on the right-hand side of the screen borders his property.
So that is a warehouse that next to his property?
That's to the west.
If, would you go to the other picture with the trucks?
This one?
Uh-huh.
That's his property. That's what he's, that's...
Okay, that's on the other side behind the, the old grocery store.
Right, and you can see the wood fence you were talking about in the background.
Okay. All right, any questions? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. Come on up. Tell us what you're gonna do. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Xavier Williams, sixty-fifty Ricky Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
All right, sir.
Uh, how long have you been doing this? It looks like you're well-established in there. Right?
Yes, sir.
And this, did you build that building with a permit, or did you do any of this with a building permit?
No, um, I had a company, uh, to come put a garage up and, um, they come put the garage up on a Saturday, and they, before I hired them, I asked them good, are they pulling the permit to put the garage storage there? And they said yes. And when I come back from out of town, they already had the garage up. So at that time, I contacted the company and asked them, why did they put the building there without the permit? And I never could get no explanation, so I come down here and try to pull a permit on my, on my own after they supposedly, supposed to have pulled the permit, and then that's when everything came about, about a permit. But it is, uh, I was trying to open up a lay-down yard just to keep my tools and couple of pieces of equipment that I do have there. I'm not operating from that property. It's just where I keep my things at, 'cause I can't keep them at my house.
So you don't own this property?
Well, I'm buying the property from, from a lady. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that picture is the garage you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the shop next door is my dad's shop. That property was once all property together, but when they sold, they split everything up.
The shop to the west, the big building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm sure your dad's not in the opposition to this, right? Just asking. Okay. Well, that's kind of interesting. Uh, how much money have you spent on this thing so far?
About twenty-five thousand.
Have you contacted the, the people that owned that little piece of residential unit in the, well, not the whole? The, the one in the yellow is the only place that's, uh, residential?
No, it's all the way around it. The only thing that's not residential is the business that his dad owns.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for, for the gentleman before? I'll, I'll let him go, but you do have any questions? Okay. Uh, we would go to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Mr. Neal?
Taylor Neal, one-five-three-eight West Lucas. Feel guilty that I'm letting you guys meet all my friends today, but I've been friends with Xavier for twenty, twenty-plus years. Uh, one of the hardest-working guys and families that I know. Um, and it's obvious by looking at these pictures that he's trying to keep this place clean. I have no doubt he would be, uh, friendly to the neighbors if we just figure out a way to put proper restrictions on this, try to figure out a way to make this work. Thank you.
Looks nice and clean. You're correct. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case?
I have a question.
Please.
What, what's a lay-down yard?
Just the storage where he puts his equipment? No work being done? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, with staff, when we realized that this was done without a permit, if we kinda tried to sit down with them and see how can we actually fix this, or what can we do to do about this, or it's just kinda, once the permit wasn't pulled, that's when we had to come here?
That's how they got here. There was no permit.
Oh, the no permit was pulled, okay.
Yeah.
This is, this is the avenue to fix it.
Okay, now, okay, now I'm following it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Adina, I've got a question, just 'cause it's a little confusing to me. It does look great, clean, nice. He's done a lot of work on it. This says he's going or wants to store three dump trucks, but no parking for the dump trucks or vehicles for the drivers are shown on the site plan. Can you explain that, please?
In order to park the three dump trucks, he would need to have, uh, parking for the three dump trucks as well as parking spaces for the vehicles the drivers would be driving when they arrive and wish to drive the trucks away. Uh, unless they're walking to the property. But, um, I, I guess they could carpool, but we would require, if there's three separate drivers, I would expect to have three separate parking spaces for those drivers to park their vehicles and then drive off in the dump trucks.
Okay, and you're saying on this site plan, it not only doesn't show that there's not room for that?
We don't, we don't believe that there's adequate room for the parking, for six parking spaces. And, uh, and the six-foot-wide landscape strip that would be required between all that parking and the right-of-way. It's a very long right-of-way um, strip across there. And there is some existing landscaping, uh, across the, the, um, Caldwell, I think it is, street frontage, but it doesn't quite meet our requirements for what he's doing. That was there when the house existed.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Adina, I don't know who wrote this, but it seems like somebody's conscience was bothering them because you keep all this avenue of if it approved, they should do this and that, right?
Well, I tried to include things that I thought if you decided you did want to approve it, I wanted you to be aware that there were certain things that we needed maybe can, to condition.
Okay.
That was, that was the purpose of that.
I think, I think I very well understand your, your issue of parking. I would suggest that without causing him additional fees, we let him go back and come back with a drawing that shows how he can fit his trucks, and, uh, we'll go ahead and look at it again.
Commissioner, Mr. Williams had, I guess, wants to speak again.
Okay.
As it relates to this issue, since it wasn't brought up earlier.
All right.
Why I see, why he's walking up, is it unreasonable to think that the employees can park at his dad's business next door?
Well, as long as, as, as... Well, as long as, as long as we have some documentation for it. But go ahead, sir.
I'm Xavier Williams, sixty-fifty Ricky.
You have figured out the trick. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I, on that site plan right there, I do, I went back to the drawing board. As you can see on the existing grocery store, they have a driveway
Yeah.
coming off of Caldwell Avenue. Well, particularly, I don't have guys that drive my dump trucks. I'm the driver.
But you're gonna have three dump trucks.
No, no, ma'am. It's a small one, a medium, and a big one, but I only use them only when I need to. I don't even use them every day.
Gotcha. Okay.
In between the two official buildings on the property, it's asphalt there, and we do have an entrance way coming off of Lenson Way Two with a driveway that goes all the way through the property. And in between the two buildings, there is an asphalt parking lot there. They've been there.
So you you actually operate one truck at a time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do a little landscaping, a little small concrete jobs.
All right. Well, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor?
I have a question.
Please.
So you're the only one that drives the dump trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
Even if you had three drivers, couldn't you just pull the dump trucks out of, off the property, put them on the street, and then pull the cars in it? It may, it may be?
You know, he was already ahead.
In line.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just want to say, I know Mister Williams actually does some work for me, really hard worker, does a good job, and anything that he could do to help him, help him would be a good idea.
Despite Mister Neal's recommendation, we will. Okay, well, it it's seriously though, folks, it looks like the the clarification here is that he he operates one truck at a time. He is a driver. He's got a property next door that might be available to him. He has some landscaping, but he needs to comply with the rest of it. And with that, we can make the landscaping a part of this
Condition.
Condition, and I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve with the conditions.
The condition is not stated here. If you would, we need to state the condition, please.
Condition one is landscaping. Condition two is make a good drawing and present to the Planning and Zoning Committee, make sure where you're parking your trucks, cars, and bring another drawing.
Uh, we're trying to avoid him coming back. He already said he's he's not gonna be driving all the three.
Okay.
If I may, the the requirements are a a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer with trees and an eight-foot-wide either wood or masonry screening fence. Also, if he did provide an updated site plan to staff, he would not have to come back. So if that was your third condition?
He doesn't have to come back.
He wouldn't have to come back here. He would just provide her with an updated plan.
Okay, would you state that again?
And maybe showing four parking spaces then, so one for him and three for the dump trucks?
Okay.
Would that be more reasonable?
Mister Xavier, you're making this hard on us. Okay, go ahead and restate your motion, please.
Oh, just for clarification, that's found in that last paragraph where it says, in addition, the property. Those were the recommendations by staff in that paragraph where it starts with in addition, the property. It'd be that ten-foot-wide landscape buffer.
In addition, the property to the west along the north end of the property is zone R M H. If approved, a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer with three trees and eight-foot or masonry screening fence is required along that portion of the property line that borders the R M H zone property. And also six-foot-long wide.
Six-foot-wide landscape.
Landscape.
And a drawing with
Updated parking spots.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Do we get a raise for this one?